It's not like switching money from your savings to your checking. It doesn't work like that. That's a criticism we get all the time.
Because all the projects that you're going to see going on in the county, and Michael's on his report, a couple of them, the improvements at Lombardi, the improvements at the boat ramps on St. George Island East Point. Those three particularly are projects that the state of Florida negotiated with BP to fund five years ago. It's taken five years to get those things going. And they were specific, those were the specific projects. Because at that time, we still thought the Corps of Engineers was going to dredge the East Point Channel. But even if the Corps hadn't, even if the Corps had told us five years ago, the state of Florida was determining what was going to be made improvements out of their money. And they chose those projects. So we, our hands were sort of tied. They gave us a list of projects, "Do you want these done?" And it wasn't like, "What do you want done? Do you want these done?" And we said, "Well, yeah, we'll take these." And we didn't have an opportunity. Commissioner Sanders knows all too well that of the known money, there are none at the east end of the county. We couldn't get BP or the state of Florida to give us anything for the east end of the county. We had needs at Alligator Point, they didn't want to do it, care about, they didn't want to do it. So they gave us a list of ideas, and we picked the best ones. But the projects at Alligator Point weren't funded, the East Point Channel wasn't funded. We were just given a slate of things and saying, because they had already negotiated things with BP. And they said, "Do you want these?" And we said, "Well, yeah, this is all we can get, we'll take whatever we can get."
Thank you, Alan, for explaining.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, maybe the public need to know that the commission didn't have nothing to do with it. It was the state of Florida.
Exactly.
That's what we need to send word to the public. That we didn't do this, the state done this.
Right, right. And of course, to Ellis Court, you know, we weren't getting anything out of Ellis Court until we actually bought the land. And then the state of Florida said, "Oh, we, the state of Florida, can get credit for something." So they offered this as a million dollars to Ellis Court, even though it was never on the table. We didn't even know about this opportunity until we'd already bought the land. And then the state of Florida shows, because they were already negotiating all the stuff with BP, and they need to have a project they can do fast, so they picked us. We didn't, we didn't even know this was an opportunity. But again, on behalf of the commission and the public, you know, we're trying to get as much BP money in the community as we can. And we don't have an open slate to say, "Well, BP, you're going to fund this." We are somewhat restricted because they come in and say, "Well, we can do this, do you want it done?" And we say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, we'll take that." And I'll be honest, we tried to get BP money for the Armorys example, turned us down. We tried to get BP money, well, say, for a project on the east end of the county, turned us all down. So there have been opportunities where we've asked for other things, and they said, "No, we've already negotiated it. And this is, you either take what we offer you, or you don't get it."
Okay, thank you, Alan. We'll go back to the public here, and it's supposed to be over at 9:30. Mean County Zoning Code, Eve's and Overhang.
Correct.
If I could actually ask Mr. Pierce to come up and give a little bit of some testimony on the history of this issue with the eve and the eve overhang as it relates to our setbacks.
Let me do one thing, let me get Mark Carron in there, who is, who will stand behind me and punch me if I say something that's not right. Because this issue could have come up years ago, I'll be honest with you. And I'll say this, and I'll say it again when Mark gets here. Could have come up years ago. And this is an oversight, one of those situations that when you have a rural county, and you have lots of open space, and people aren't, you know, the lots that are being built on have vacant lots between them, you don't really appreciate sometimes what has happened. And apparently, and it may have even started before I got here, but certainly in my career, and I'm going to have Mark hear me say this, is that some builders who are pulling permits never show the eve overhang on the site plan. So we have a site plan of a hundred-foot wide lot, there'd be a house in the middle of it, it would show a footprint. And I'm going to say something to verify with Mark. I think the distinction was architects, for whatever reason, didn't draw eve overhangs. It was a builder who was pulling the permit, he would show the eve overhangs. But we didn't know that, you know, we were out in the field, and you have a, you have a house that's being built, and the lot next door is vacant, you know, you don't notice how close things are. And sometimes, it's not apparent. Mark, I was just saying something that this issue of the eve overhang and not being shown on site plan has been going on for as long as we know, a long time.
A very long time.
Maybe before we got here.
Yes.
And so, and I was saying, one of the distinctions I have seen briefly is that it looks like architects tend to leave not to put eve overhangs on their site plans, and builders did. Or is that not true?
Not necessarily. I mean, it sort of depends.
On who's doing it?
On who's doing it. Some of them do show the overhang, some of them don't. But we're now requiring that all of them show the overhang on their site plan specifically.
But 20 years ago, when you have a lot of vacant lots, like you say in George Island example, you have hundred-foot wide lots, you know, someone's building a house, you know, the lots are surveyed, but you have four-corner survey marks, someone's building a house. You know, it's not apparent that you're close, that much closer to the pipeline, there's not a house next door. And so the eve overhang wasn't really an issue. I mean, weren't any neighbors complaining about it? You know, we, the house was, we saw a house in the site plan, and the builder, I'm sorry, the building inspector at the time didn't really appreciate whether the site plan had eve overhangs or not. It was just, it wasn't an issue, because there wasn't any neighbors really, so you could have some distance to compare how close you were. So we have a number of houses in the county. Now that lots are being built, you know, being built in and filled in, it's like, "Oh, wow, that house's overhang is into the setback." And we have lots that are being, houses being sold, that's how it came to light, I believe. A house was being sold, and the new survey showed the eve into the, into the 10-foot setback. We didn't issue a variance for it. And so we're now having to address that, because it has happened repetitively in the past. And I have looked at other communities, in fact, the community that I own another house in in Brevard, North Carolina, they allow a two-foot overhang into the, or the eve without any variance. They just accept that as standard practice in that community. We made inquiries in other communities around Florida. It goes either way. Some communities allow the eve to overhang in the side setbacks, some don't. So in order to solve this problem that's been going on for a while, it's our recommendation that we allow the eve overhang without a variance of up to 30 inches, because there are a lot of houses, and over time, are going to come up with this issue. And so we're trying to solve it all, all the past sins all at one time by saying, "Okay, we didn't know this was going on, but the houses are now there, and as they sell, and if someone is going to get a mortgage, and there's a survey, you know, we're trying to resolve this for everybody, so that you don't have to, you know, come up periodically in the past." And so if we're going to deal with the past, well, then let's look in the future and see if it's a really big issue. And the way that Mark drafts the language, I think I support it. It basically says, you know, you can have up to 30 inches overhang without a variance, just for the eve. And then if anything else encroaches, you need a variance, and you go to the Board of Justice and be public notice. And people would say, "Well, what about those 15-foot, those 25-foot lots on St. George Island? What about the eve overhang there?" Well, the eve over there is going to be captured by the variance, because those 25-foot lots have to have a variance anyway, because the house itself is in the setbacks. And so all those skinny minis, any future skinny minis, they're going to be dealt with through a variance process anyway. So it's not like they're going to be getting the free overhang, because the house itself has to get a variance. So I don't see where this creates any more problems for the county, but it does solve, for the future, but it does solve a situation in the past where we, and we don't know, unless we pull all the building permits we've issued in the last 25 or 30 years, we don't know how many houses are out there that where the builders didn't show the eve overhang. We just don't know. So I think this solves a problem, and I appreciate Mark's verbiage. And that's sort of, that's sure where we got to where we're at.
Right. Is there any public comment on this proposed ordinance? Any public comment? Commissioners, I've prepared for you, or actually, Mark had prepared the initial draft, sent it to me. I've looked over the ordinance. I find it to be in legal form, if the ordinance is to adopt this and allow encroachments of the roof overhang up to 30 inches from the, or into the side setbacks, or the front setbacks. One thing that changed, though, based on what I heard this morning, is staff wants this ordinance to be enacted retrospectively. And right now, it's not present, there's not sufficient language in this proposed ordinance to apply it retroactively. It would only be from this point forward. It sounds like, from what I'm hearing, it needs to be retroactive to cure problems that may exist for other properties.
That's my assessment. That's how we got here, because it was a problem that popped up in the past.
That's fine. No other, if I can add the language to do that.
Well, I think the immediate problem that came up was, there was a very, a lot that had eroded on St. George Island that, it eroded to such a degree that with the 50-foot setback from mean high water and the 25-foot from the road, it was a very tight lot. And the builder had a house that he could fit on there, but with the roof overhangs, he did not show the roof overhangs. And when we took those into account, it did not meet the setbacks. Those roof overhangs hung into the, into the setback. And we told him, you know, "You would either have to have a variance or adjust your house." And...
And then he said, "Well, wait a minute, I've been doing this all along."
Exactly. He said, "You know, we've done this on the other houses, and I can show you a list of houses." And, you know, he brought in some, several of the ones he had done in the past. And we agreed, yes, that we had not picked up that the site plan did not show the roof overhangs, and they were sticking into the setback. And that's when we said, you know, "The ordinance does not allow that, but we're willing to take this to the, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission and see what their recommendation was, and take it." And they recommended allowing the, these to go into, adjusting the ordinance to allow overhangs into the setback, you know, with a limitation of whatever. And we chose 30 inches.
And so Mark is, so the, so we're asking, yes, because we have, we now know houses that encroaching. As they sell, you know, if there's title questions come up, we need to, my feeling is we're resolving now, and this does it by just making it retroactive, all the houses that were already permitted.
Right. I mean, it'll probably be a good idea to do that now with this ordinance.
One question I got is, looking at the ordinance, it still does not allow for, or it still does not require that they show the roof overhangs in their...
We're doing that through administrative way in the...
Okay, okay, so that doesn't need to be included?
Okay. Pleasure to be with the board.
With the chairman, good night.
And y'all taking care of the pass with the 30? What about them over 30, and what about the future?
Well, this takes care of the future by allowing it. But if, we don't, unfortunately, we don't know what's out there, because there may be houses with, well, there's no house that has, there are no house, there should be no house permitted that has anything in the, in the, in the side setbacks except overhangs. Because if their building is in the side setback, we should have issued a variance for that. Now, there will be occasions when maybe we didn't by just pure oversight. But there should be nothing in the side setbacks except these eve overhangs, because we just didn't catch it in the past. And I will tell you, Commissioner, there's, St. Teresa's a perfect example where it's a jungle out there. We don't know what's, you know, what's in this situation along St. Teresa, because people are building everywhere. But we tried as best we could to keep houses and the structures in the, in the lot space available. But this is eve overhang just didn't show up on site plans, and we just didn't know that until this issue came up.
Commissioner Lockley, to answer your question specifically, if the overhang exceeds 30 inches, they would be required to apply for a variance through the Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, good question.
But that would be just for the eves?
Well, it would be for whatever extends into the encroachment. If it's more than 30 inches or whatever part of the building, whatever.
And that's into the setback, not lot wise?
Right, right, exactly.
Any other comments from the board? Pleasure to be with the board.
Mr. Chairman, advice to the board is, if you're going to accept staff's recommendation that the ordinance be made, apply retroactively, that you include that specifically in the motion that's required by law.
I mean, your planning zoning is recommended, of course, we recommend planning zoning. You know, we didn't ask for any builders to come here to talk about it, but I feel like this is something the community, the building community supports, based on our content.
When you're talking about applying it retroactively, you're talking about going back?
Back in time.
To any houses that have already been built, so that those people don't have to come in back in later to get a variance or something when they sell.
Apparently, what's happening, if I heard Mr. Pierce's testimony correctly, is lenders are tightening up their lending requirements. And when they obtain a survey, and it shows a roof overhang in the airspace of the setback, they, the lender then wants to see a variance, and if there's not a variance, and apparently, it's creating problems.
It can create a problem, yes.
Maybe not for all lenders, but apparently for some lenders. And I think what staff and planning zoning are trying to solve is that entire issue, and not only now moving forward, but also retrospectively for houses that are already completed, because, you know, there's probably thousands of them countywide that may be affected potentially by these other hangs that may technically be lending violations as far as the lenders are concerned, when they look at the survey and they see the encroachment, but no variance has been granted for the encroachment.
Yeah.
It's a very nuanced argument, I agree with you, but lenders, you know how banks can be. They just, they have a checkbox, and if they can't check the box off, then people don't get their loans.
I put that...
Well, Commissioner, it doesn't matter, we just say retroactive for any, for any house that's all the way in.
So may, and that to include the attorney's comments also?
The ordinance will be applied retroactively, Commissioner Sanders.
Well, motion fulfilled by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
Yeah, make sure that whatever the law you want in there be in there.
Any other comments from the board? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries? We'll go back to...
Ms. Belcher's here now, Commissioner.
Ms. Belcher's here, and Ms. Moore here. Come forward, Ms. Moore, and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Deborah Moore. I'm the Director of the Guardian at Lightem Program in the Second Judicial Circuit, which covers Franklin County. I'm so glad to be here today. Usually, I'm here when it's time to make sure we continue to have our money from you each year to support our program. But this year, I was intent on getting to know you all a little bit more, having you learn a little bit more about our program, other than just that one time of year. And one of the big reasons for that is that we have seen a surge in the number of children coming into the system. And there are many reasons, I feel like, that that's happened. But it was happening last year in South Florida, and we stayed pretty steady. You all remember hearing from me that our numbers have stayed pretty steady. We average about 15 to 20 children from Franklin County on a regular basis. But we've seen a bit of an increase in that in all of the counties, including Franklin County. So I'm trying to be as proactive as possible to make sure that our record of being able to serve 100% of the children in our area continues, no matter how many children the judge appoints to us here in Franklin County. So that's a big reason why I'm here. I put together some folders for you with our, thank you very much. We have a brand-new brochure, and one of my asks for you today, I'm never afraid to be told no on behalf of the children. So one of my asks is that it's critical, we feel like, that we recruit more Guardian at Lightem advocates in Franklin County. Historically, you all have heard me talk about that we have about 315 advocates in our circuit to serve over 520 children. Unfortunately, only six of those advocates serve the children here in Franklin County. That is definitely not enough. It's definitely not enough advocates to make sure that today, if we get called and children are removed from their home, that we can have an advocate serving that children immediately. And that's the way it should be. That's what these children deserve. Every one of the children that we're serving in your county right now has the benefit, as all 520 of our children, of one of our attorneys, one of our child advocate managers, who are staff, and then an advocate. And all of the advocates are volunteers in the community. So it's critical that we have individuals that live here, that know the community, that know the resources, that can provide that support like no other person can. And we have had to pull individuals from Tallahassee, from Waukulla, to serve the children in Franklin County. So I'm determined that we are going to change that. I've been doing this almost 20 years, and we have really struggled with this goal over the years. One of the asks that I have for you is that, as you're listening to me finishing up here, and I'm going to ask Pat, you heard from Michael, which I appreciate him coming up and sharing some thoughts with you, but that you may have some thoughts of some things that we could do that may be even different than what we've been able to try before, to recruit individuals from this community. It's not an easy ask, it's not an easy role. These individuals are assigned to children that have experienced unimaginable trauma. And that's what keeps us going, is we want to make it better for them. The children that we're serving here in this county right now have experienced unbelievable domestic violence, incredible neglect because of substance abuse. It would bring tears to your eyes, as it does me every time I read what these children have been through and why it has come to the drastic measure of having to remove them from their home. The children in this community many times are suffering from poverty. The caregivers that are taking them in, because we don't have foster homes, we need more foster homes. We need foster homes in this community and all of our outlining counties. But they're placed with relatives many times, or they're removed and placed in outlining counties adjacent to Franklin County. So that disrupts their school, it disrupts their, their emotional well-being with what's familiar and consistent to them. So the responsibility that we have is to make this better for them and to make sure that they have productive lives and that they're cared for, and that they establish permanency. And that's our responsibility, is to these children. So I brought, one of our promotional tools is we have these brand-new brochures. It talks about the volunteer role, what the responsibilities are. And it is a very serious responsibility, and it's not something to take lightly. You have to do this 200%. It's absolutely necessary that our advocates are visiting the children in the home, that they're coming to court and helping the judge make decisions, talking with teachers, making sure the children are doing well in school, making sure they have warm clothes, making sure that they get the therapy that they deserve and that they desperately need. So I brought these brochure holders. It has my business card, it has our brochures, of course. And I would like your help in figuring out where we can display these brochures. Something as that simple is so essential, because many of you have talked with me when I've been here about, "The community doesn't know what you do." The community needs to understand how important this program is and how we need the community individuals to step up and be there for these children. We have been successful at connecting with the sheriff's departments in each of our counties. Sheriff Smith was so gracious and understood the need for assistance for us. So during the summer, he helped me coordinate a coffee. So the sheriff came and visited with me with some individuals in the community and some of our active guardians here. Unfortunately, we weren't able to recruit any advocates, but it was really an absolutely wonderful opportunity for him to show his support to the individuals that are already serving. But that's the kind of assistance and support that we need, and we just need to do more of it. So I'm still hopeful to get an article in the newspaper very soon. And we're just looking for any kind of creative way that we can get the word out and that we can bring individuals into the community. Honestly, we could double the number, have, say, 12 to 15 advocates, and that would be huge for us. So it's not that we're trying to recruit 100 people. It's, a small number would allow for us to meet the need. So before I finish up, I would like to see if Pat would come up and just share with me her personal experience. Pat and Michael O'Connell have been longtime Guardian at Lightem advocates, and really exemplify what it means to give 200% and to just hang in there, no matter how difficult the circumstances can be. So I'll just have Pat share a little bit.
Appreciate all the time you're giving this program. It is certainly worthwhile. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I will tell you, I appreciate your taking the time. There are many volunteer activities for people, and all of us contribute in many ways. We, like many of you, contribute our time and our resources to the library, the Humane Society, all of the wonderful programs that are supported by volunteers. But nothing, nothing that you can ever do will change the life of a child like working as a Guardian at Lightem. What you do when you're a Guardian at Lightem is look out for that kid. When you're in the courtroom, the mother has lawyers, the dad has lawyers, the state has lawyers, and the child has a volunteer who works with paid staff. But it's a volunteer who's there for one purpose, the voice of that child. They don't want to leave their homes, they don't care who beats them up or what other violence they see. They don't blame their parents. They have to have a voice that is a mature and loving voice that speaks up to them, for them, and the judge listens. This is a program that works, and we hope that you'll continue to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. She didn't realize she was getting volunteered again to share. But I know that with my experience, what I share with you is valuable, but it's much more valuable to hear from someone who does this and sees the importance from their perspective. So again, I'm grateful for the financial support that this county provides to support the children that we serve in our program. But we need the advocates, and we need to fix this now. The cases are coming in, and I mean, the children that we need to support are coming in much more rapidly for many reasons. But we need to be there and be prepared to have these children have their own special support system. So I'm asking for your help. I will not discount any suggestion whatsoever, because again, you know this community, and you know how we can recruit individuals from this community the best possible way. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I appreciate you looking at the material and listening to me today and to Pat and Michael. I'm grateful for your time, and I'm happy to meet with you individually, if you would like to do that. The rental car, the state makes me take a rental car, and it doesn't open until 7:30. So that's why I was a little bit late. But I'm happy to meet with you anytime, and I'm grateful, again, for your support.
Let me throw out a discussion real quick. I was doing some reading a couple of weeks ago, and there are 647,000 children across the United States that are in the same situation that you're talking about. And not only that, a lot of it has to do with opioid addiction crisis that we're facing, a lot of domestic violence, the kids are not being taken care of. And just about every state in the U.S. is out of foster homes. There's no place to put these kids, there's no place to place them. And even in Annapolis College Times, the letters to Santa this year, just to cite a couple of them. One of them was a second grader at a local school there. What was her wish for Christmas? Just for my parents to quit fighting. And that's heart-wrenching. Another one was, "What would you like for Christmas?" "I'd like my sisters and my brothers to have warm clothes, and my parents need warm clothes, too." They asked for nothing for themselves, nothing. It was all about trying to settle some of the issues of domestic violence and the parents fighting among them. And these were kids right here in Franklin County that you're referring to.
Right.
So I understand the need, and if you read the letters to the senators in Annapolis College Times, you're familiar with what I'm speaking about. And these are second and third grade kids, just pouring their heart out. And they got off the subject of what they wanted from Santa. It's what they wanted their brother and their sisters to have, and their parents to quit fighting. their sisters to have, and their parents to quit fighting, and it just goes on and on and on. I had to quit reading it. Actually, my secretary was reading, she says, you need to read some of these, so I started reading, of course, she went in her office and started that. So it's very heart-touching, I do support the Guardian at Lightem program, having the ability to have, to be able to spend time. And another issue was, when you called my house, left a voicemail, I said, I need to call this lady back, it's Guardian at Lightem, my wife said, well, have my granddaughter put on that list? I said, baby, you don't want your granddaughter on this list. She thought it was a program, you know, giveaway to those kids. You don't want your granddaughter on this list, this is Guardian. And then when I went and explained it to her, then it touched her heart also, as to what the program does and what provides, what the program provides for the kids in Franklin County. My overall suggestion would be to put that in the paper and set up a place that people that might be interested in could come in and meet with you, and you could explain the program to them, we'd make it, find someplace to accommodate that, and try to get some people in here that, I don't think everybody is, I don't know if it's an issue of people turning a blind eye to desperation of these kids or what, you know, but there's gotta be some people out here with a good heart that would provide, to volunteer and to be a voice for these kids, and I think it's a very worthwhile program, you know, I do support it.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? I think the board wholeheartedly agrees with what I'm saying here. I can't speak for the board, but I can tell by the way, looking at their expressions, that they understand what I'm saying, they understand what you're saying, and we will continue to support as best we can, and as best as we have the ability to, you know.
Great, thank you so much.
And if you could do that, get something in the paper and have some kind of, I won't say a drive, but you need someplace to sit down where you can explain to people that might be willing to do it, to come in and learn about the program. If you're with county staff, they'll try to help you find a place that we can set aside for you to be able to have this rounded up, I guess you'd say, and try to create some more volunteers for this program.
Great, thank you, and we have definitely been thinking about that with our more aggressive work in trying to recruit more Guardian at Lightem advocates in three of our counties actually, including Franklin County, that we would have an orientation type of opportunity with individuals who are interested, and then there is a pretty comprehensive training that you can, as you can imagine, to help individuals know how we have the authority from the courts to do what we do and how to fulfill this role and the support that they would be given so that they're successful. We want to do that with them individually so they don't have to come to Tallahassee, and that's been one of the obstacles that we are required to have that training, so we are going to definitely find some creative ways to make sure that we bring on more people to support the children, so thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in today. The board recessed five minutes.
Okay, thank you.